And then let me share.
Everyone, please stand with the ladies. Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the river elected for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Jacob, please call a roll, please.
Butler? Jordan? Lipscomb? Obrich?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Crash?
Here.
Vincenzo?
Here.
All members present.
Okay, we have four members present this evening. I was the five prior to meeting, the absence of the three council members that are not here. So at this time, first thing on the agenda is the minutes from the June 5th meeting. Everyone here received their copy. And does anyone have any questions? Hearing no questions, will someone want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I might do a motion.
A motion needs a second.
I've got a form.
A motion needs a second?
Second.
Okay, take a roll call, Luke.
Obrich?
Here.
Yes. Smith?
Yes.
Crash?
Yes.
Vincenzo? Yes.
All members in favor.
Okay. Four members in favor. That's our official for the June 5th meeting. I do have several pieces I want to get Jacob to read here for correspondence, the response for this bike trail thing. We'll get that there very shortly, other correspondence. First item on the agenda was Berger Report. Mary, do you have a report you would like?
Sure, sweet. Jeremy and I have been, spent two days meeting with Act Askeny, talking about contract negotiations. So we're not anywhere near finished, but we've gone through, what, three quarters of the contract maybe. I attended the NAACP picnic on Friday night. It was a great evening. Sheriff Deputy Lucas spoke, spoke to Mr. Barchhorst regarding a meeting at John Glenn Leadership School, which I'm supposed to go to on the ninth. Met with Elizabeth, like, we talked about easements of properties. We're preparing for the Bike Trail Celebration tomorrow night. The weather, it could be a factor, I hope not. Went to the Omega Meeting today in Smithfield. That was very interesting. And I'll brief you, Jeremy, with what they were talking about with grants and some of the things coming up. I've got the folder of individuals to see it. And then I've got the proclamation to read for the Bike Trail. We've got these handy dandy shirts. I've got a white one, but they will be for sale. The Bike Trail shirts, I think they're going to be $20 each. Beautiful logo, I think U-Hub designed it, and Eric Timko looks really nice. And so I expect everybody in St. Clairsville to be wearing a Bike Trail shirt. Whereas on June 26, 1998, the National Road Bike Way officially opened for the enjoyment of residents of the city of St. Clairsville and Richland Township, along with trail enthusiasts in the Ohio Valley and beyond. Whereas former Mayor Robert Vincenzo and Public Services Director Dennis Pigler led the decade-long effort to work with federal, state, and local elected and appointed officials to convert the former Wheeling and Lake Erie Railroad rail bed into a linear park running north to south through the city. And whereas the Wheeling and Lake Erie Railroad officials worked expeditiously with the city to sell the railroad property, giving the project the needed nucleus. And whereas the National Road Bike Way is recognized as unique, primarily due to two features, the 532-foot-long, 40-foot-high rail trail tunnel under Interstate, or under US 40, near the center of the Bike Way, which has been preserved and developed as a trail path, and a preserved 340-foot-long rail trail trestle over State Route 9. And whereas the National Road Bike Way was a cooperative project of the city of St. Clairsville and High Department of Transportation, which provided funding along with transportation and multimodal planning experts from the District 11 Office and Columbus. And whereas the Ohio Department of Natural Resources professionals worked closely with city officials to preserve the woodlands and wetlands along the main course of the road, and the agency awarded a grant for the construction of the Chamber of Commerce gazebo. And whereas nonprofit organizations, including the Rails to Trails Conservancy and its Ohio chapter, the Sierra Club, River Sun Limited, Ohio Greenways, Ohio Parks and Recreation, Ohio Mid Eastern Government Association, St. Clairsville Chamber of Commerce, St. Clairsville Sunrise and Noon Rotary Clubs, Lions Clubs, Boy Scouts, Belco, and the Gardeners Forum, they all actively participated in the city's efforts to develop this unique open space. And whereas working with city leadership, the private sector, national as well as local business, contributed toward local matches of grant funding and led in the creation of a variety of enhancements along the length of the National Road Bike Way. And whereas special recognition is merited for John Goodman and Jack Halloran, local businessmen who led the private fundraising efforts, and Bill Street, who engineered the Bike Way. Whereas private citizens of all ages continue to share their time, talent, and resources to make the National Road Bike Way a focal point in the community. And whereas, critical to the longevity of the National Road Bike Way, the city's leadership, employees, and seasonal employees have worked together for over 25 years to further develop and maintain the Bike Way and its enhancements for the community's benefit. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Catherine Thalman, Mayor of the city of St. Clairsville, in cooperation with the city council, do hereby proclaim Monday, June 26, 2023, as National Road Bike Way 25th Anniversary, and encourage citizens and friends to join us in celebrating this enduring city landmark. And witness thereof, I hereby to subscribe my seal to the city of the state of, to the city of St. Clairsville on this 20th day of June of 2023. So again, thanks to everyone who put their time, talents, and visions to putting that Bike Way together. My dog Sammy and I enjoy it almost every night. It's a wonderful place. A lot of people come, and it's a place that is going to attract people to our town. It's a wonderful enhancement. So thank you to everyone who did something to do with that. And that's it. That's enough.
Thank you, Mayor. As everyone knows, I'm sure, there's a ceremony tomorrow evening at the Bike Trail to celebrate this. There were quite a lot of invitations sent out to a lot of these people that the mayor was talking about, and we did receive two correspondence back in reference to those invitations. I'll ask Jacob to read them.
Dear Mayor Thalman, thank you very much for the invitation to the 25th anniversary of the Bike Trail. I must decline the invitation due to previous plans already in place. Please accept this donation for the Bike Trail exhibit towards flower baskets or maintenance. I didn't grow up in St. Clairsville, but my children did. I have been here for over 40 years, and I'm very proud of the city of St. Clairsville. With leadership like yours, I know it will continue to grow and prosper. Thank you for including me in this event. Sincerely, Shelley Fordby.
That's very nice.
And then the next one, the St. Clairsville Area Council of Churches, and I would like to extend our appreciation to your participation in the 2023 Baccalaureate. The students surely respect and admire you, and have selected you to present the community leader portion of the program. Wishing you continued success in your endeavors. Many blessings. Paula Pollock.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for the mayor on her report to start off? I think I'll get it first.
Really no question, but I talked with Roberta today, and she just asked if I would kind of have council, anybody, council members that's going to go to the ceremony tomorrow night to just let her know.
Six to seven, so about an hour, and there will be cupcakes and refreshments, and encourage people to take a walk if it's not raining, so.
Ed Epaugh has also very graciously allowed that big vacant parking lot that he owns there for the city to, anybody that's attending the function can park in that lot, so that if there's elderly people that could be dropped off right by the gazebo and park over in that lot. So very much thanks to Ed for allowing the city to use that lot.
I'm unable to attend to, I'll be out of town for work. Do I need to let Roberta know that I'm not?
She just asked if you were going to be there to let her know tomorrow.
So a no response would mean?
Yeah, you wouldn't have to call.
Ethan?
I'm not, I have a question. Was that your only question?
That's it.
So the contract negotiations? First of all, I just again want to commend the administration for doing that. That saves, if we had outside attorneys, I know in the past, they would contract with outside attorneys, we wanted this for contract negotiations, and that bill got very hefty. So I appreciate that you guys are, you know, doing the negotiations. It shows that the union, you know, respects the administration, and will save, just the negotiations part saves a ton of money for you guys to work on. So I want to commend you guys on that, but then I'm just curious, when, when is the current contract expire? Like, when, when do we anticipate?
June 30.
June 30. So are we anticipating this? Are we going to have to extend that?
We'll probably have to extend it. There's a couple items on there that were in heavy discussions on. Others are minor things, and some are just cleaning up verbiage, stuff that's happened and going through. So those are the easy ones. Some of the other ones, back and forth, but we've been trying to get the union since May.
Yeah, part of it depends on the schedule of the negotiator, because he's been all over the place.
For the union.
For the union, yes. So we're just telling them, we'll meet when you want, and we have two days last week, and then I'll.
We've got two next week on schedule.
So potentially, we could be done?
Could be, yes.
We could have it. And then just to remind us what our responsibility is at that point?
We would bring the, the contract to, as, I don't know if that would be legislation? Yeah. So it would have to be brought to council for passage.
Okay. And then it goes to us before it goes to the union? Or both parties are going to?
I think both work at the same time. So I think they would be working on their end as we're working on it.
Right. If, if they're satisfied, then we'll bring it to council. Council says, no, I don't want to do this, I'd rather do this, and we have to think it back to them. They have to agree to whatever change you were interested in making. Then once they agree with whatever, or if they say, no, we don't want to go that, it's like a grudge sale, you know? You go back and forth and come to a meeting in the middle. And so it would go back and forth until both parties agree with the language.
And I don't, you might not even be able to answer this, because you're in negotiations, but have you, how long do we think that this contract's going to last?
Three years.
Three years.
The last one was three years. They've been, been pitching three years.
Okay. Okay, then, Susan. Thank you.
I know people that go to the bike show. I know you can't park in that, but is there going to be somebody down there? I volunteer to do it if I can make it. I'm not sure if I can make it.
We're going to try and have a couple officers down there, but obviously, if they're on duty, something happens, they need to go, but we're, we're trying to coordinate that.
Okay, then second to the bike show.
What are we talking about?
There's a red Barney's out of the store.
The green light, the gray light.
So it's not a parking lot?
No.
It's the big. Did I deal a location for a dog park? That, that track of land?
If you could talk to your neighbor about that.
That track of land is what we're talking about. Not an actual parking lot.
Yeah.
And I assume you're going to make some remarks? You plan on remarking on the amount of money we're going to put in the trail up by the tunnel?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And the engineers are going to speak also. They'll have some drawings. We've got some pictures of the existing conditions of what's there. And then we've invited the adjacent property owners that will be affected by it also. Now whether they'll show or not, but.
And I encourage everyone to take the walk with the story, storytime. And I'd like to issue a big thank you to Doug Walsh at the library. You know how they put a book and the kids walk and read? They've got the whole story, the bike path. And I, I did it the other night, and it's very, very interesting. They've got a lot of pictures. It was done really, really nicely. So please avail yourselves. I think that'll be up the entire month of June and July, but they did a very nice job putting that together.
Thanks.
Any other questions for the mayor? Okay, thank you very much, Mayor. We want to, Service Director Jeremy Greenwood.
Good evening, council. Legislation items, we've got the 2023-15, the water rates, this is the third reading. 2023-16, the water rates, this is the third reading. 2023-17, zoning change is the second. And then 2023-19, that's the estimated budget, is first reading. We were asking, it's got emergency language in it, but obviously, with only four council members, we're not going to get it passed. We will find out per the Finance Committee's question, when that date is for the due date for that.
For the budget, it's July 20th. Has to be in the auditor's office.
Okay, there we go.
So we did emergency.
The first meeting, and then probably, I think you could hit the second meeting too.
Actually, I think you can do, if you want to do three reads, there are enough meetings.
Yeah, there's enough meetings.
Because our last July meeting's July 17th.
July 17th.
So if you pass it.
Yeah.
And then, then the emergency language would kick in, so we could immediately.
So we'd have to wait 30 days.
Take it over.
All right. Well, that was one question to answer. Meetings, I had 20 meetings since last council meeting. Completed projects, I did want to note on here, the T-shirts that the mayor mentioned are a fundraiser for the Bike Trail Tunnel project. As most council members know, we're about 200,000 to 300,000 short on that project. With the rate increases and inflation, the projected costs, it's kind of skyrocketed. But we're doing what we can with it, and we'll see. And we're going to try to see about maybe approaching some outside community agencies to see if they would like to contribute to it, to, you know, be named for it, but we'll, we'll get to that. Completed projects, we fixed the sinkhole on North Street. We still have to pave it, but it's still, the culvert's fixed. Street evaluations, had a outside, third-party source come in and do street evaluations for every street that we have in the city. He's ranked them accordingly to what he has. He's also got dimensions, everything else on there. Total for every one of the streets in the city, to repair them, replace them, to do everything, would be about $3 million. So unless somebody wins the lottery, we'll be, we'll be playing with this. But this is a good third-party assessment of our streets. He's got them ranked in here. He usually notes that he wants the typical average to be about 75 or above. Our rating came in at 63.22, so we've got some work to do. He did say that, you know, for only having 25 miles of streets, the quantity of streets in relation to the miles is average. So we're, we're right in that area. If anyone would be interested in looking at this, I've got this. One of the things I want to do with this is go through it. I haven't had a chance yet, and compare it to the streets that we're going to be, happen to replace and repave after the water distribution project. So those numbers will, will fluctuate a little bit there.
Jeremy, I have a question on that. Do you want me to ask that now, or do you want me to wait till the other?
I don't care.
Jim? Can I?
Sure.
Want to wait, or, I mean?
I don't care.
I just, I don't know what they're rating the streets, or what they're looking at. Why were you?
Well, they're rating the quality of the streets, so looking at the condition of the streets, whether, okay, so, let's see here, I don't know, I got this one. So our top street is Edinburgh, which.
It was a shock.
We paved it last year, so it's got 100 ratings.
When you say top, that means that's the street in town that's in the best condition?
Best condition. Yep. Our worst?
How to drive?
Kilsith Court.
What is it?
Kilsith.
Okay.
35.
Where?
The one right beside the one that's got 100.
Yes.
The one we didn't have enough to do. Because there's some streets in here, he wasn't quite sure. He was going a little further, like, he's got Slaton Drive in here, and I'm like, eh, that's not even ours.
So this is a list that you'll look at when it comes to pay in time?
It's a third-party assessment done by paving contractor, and it also has recommendations and costs for what he would recommend we do on some of those streets.
What did that assessment cost?
About $4,500.
$4,500.
Yep. But to have a third-party assessment with it and go through it, because right now, what we were doing before, when we ever had streets that we were looking at, we had to coordinate with Tom, who went through the GIS and then measured them up and everything else. Now it's all done. We've got a list here, and then we can start budgeting and going through it. He recommends that for three years.
It seems like a good investment.
I think so. I, I talked with Darren and Donnie about it beforehand, and, and we decided to pull the trigger, and, and I think it's well worth the money, the explanation.
I would like a coffee, that's okay. Just because I think it'd be interesting, and when the paving comes, and like you said, you'll cross-reference for what, what water things and stuff. So I mean, I just think that makes a lot of sense.
Yep.
What's nice too is you can be proactive and not always reactive.
Yes.
Because you're looking down, saying, okay, we have had this identified. Is it in worse shape than the one everybody's screaming about? We've got a, you know, again, it's not always about the big sinkhole that just happened. It's about, let's do it ahead of time.
That's inner to it.
So we get it, yeah. I'm sure it is.
So, I mean, it, to me, it was well worth it going through and having somebody do a third-party assessment. We've already started the, well, I don't think that one should be that low, or this, but it's a conversation starter, and we know we're right in there. But as I noted, you know, he likes to do this. He's done this in several other communities around here, and likes to have him about a 75 average, and we're below that. So we've, we've got some work to do, but we knew that going into it and everything else though, too. But that also doesn't take into account the water distribution project, which we know we're trenching streets. I mean, we're going to have some pretty major streets that we need to pave, so. Anything else?
No, I just.
Yeah, okay. Still working on water nodes as they pop up. We'll get, what, five, 10 a month? We still averaging about that?
Five nodes.
Yeah. Electric department has been relocating the fire lines and poles for the get-go, out by where Stewart's RV used to be. I think you got a, the fiber optic and telephone companies got to still move all their stuff, but, but we're, I think we're almost done with ours. West End Distribution Project, that, that project has been awarded. We've got a pre-construction this week. I've been in negotiations with the property owners for easements and temporary construction easements for that project, so that's, that's working well. We've got a quote for cleaning all three water tanks. I want to try and get that done. I want to talk to Annette when she comes back, before we switch to the county water, so that we can eat a little bit more of those costs than paying for it. The I-70 water line project, the liner's been installed. Next week or two, they're going to start laying pipe, get out there and mobilize. That contractor is the one that was also selected for the Route 40 water line project. We got the 2024 salt pricing. It's $75.58 a ton, which is actually, I think it's down from last year, what it was. So it's, it's more, but it's part of the problem, too. Everyone's in the same boat, you know? We ordered 600 tons and probably used, what, 200 or 300, if that.
It's a good problem.
So we've got extra, but we, you know, wanted to stay in the program. The water distribution project, they're still working down in the Spring Park area. We got our construction meeting number two. The boring work in various areas of the town, that should be almost completed. They got one other area to do, and then they'll be gone for a while, and then it'll be the, the people laying the pipe coming back. We've been working with the contractor on some complaints and getting better notifications out to everybody. Upcoming projects, the National Road Bike Way Anniversary, that's coming up, as everyone's mentioned here. I've got easements, more easements for the water distribution phase 1 and 2A, we're working on those. Still working on the bearing for the third screw pump at the sewer plant. Paving, as I mentioned, we went through, I had that assessment done, and then I've got a map, mapped out the water line breaks in the last 10 years, and showing which streets need to be paved. Still working with the engineer on the big sinkhole, and then working with them on the bypass road. I have come to negotiation, an amount with that property owner. I've got preliminary drawings for that. I'm going to meet with the engineer and get that revised, but that will be pretty substantial change to that North Market Street area out that way. As I mentioned, the sinkholes, I still have one on Thompson, got one on Milrose. Water line extension projects, East Side, still working on the county water agreement. Still have various building projects working on. Still working with the HR firm on the administrative policies and procedures and our employee When we have time, trying to get, you know, update standard details for everything. Working on the inflow and infiltration control plan still. As the mayor mentioned, we had Askeny contract negotiations, and then I mentioned the work, or the water tank repairs coming up. Department-wise, pretty much the same. Electric poles, service disconnect, street legs, metering, substation maintenance trucks, tree trimming, water, wastewater, nodes, water line work going through. We've had 17 water line breaks this year so far. 12 of them, in my opinion, have been contributed to this water distribution project, either directly with them boring through the water line, which happened out on Main Street, happened over here, or some of them where they're boring close enough that it's disturbing the dirt, which is the only thing holding some of these water lines together. So that's popping up. Sewer lift stations, we're still working on repairs with those. Water nodes, still trying to get appointments to get into buildings to get them installed. We're also going to start looking with the water distribution, replacing some meters, some of our high-low meters. That'll actually help with the efficiency of the metering, too. Street department, puddles, ditching, street repair, culverts, sinkholes, mowing, that's like everything. Rec Center, Summer Concert Series, and then July 1st is our Community Days. Do we know who the band is? There's like three of them, yeah.
Yeah, there's one of us in the Birdwood Fire Trinity Band, here. That's, wait a minute, I take that back. Community Days opening, Taylor, Joe Porter, and the Copper Creek Band, they're very good, and Closer is Jukebox.
Okay. And then we'll have fireworks that night. Police, same thing as before, not much. Matt, anything on, well, you give your, you can give your report. I haven't heard anything. Guys seem to be in good spirits and everything going on, and that's everything, unless anyone wants to talk about anything else.
I will mention that July 8th, I won't be there because my niece is getting married that day, but they will be doing a little bike parade up in town again. It'll be tied in with second Saturdays, and, yeah, we've got a flyer. If you know any little kids that want to come decorate their bike for the 4th of July, you know, festivities, they'll close the street so they can ride around uptown. The kids really seem to enjoy it. Jen is handling that. There will be, she's getting gift cards from the new Frosty Place, I don't remember the name of it, the New Ice Cream Place.
The Snow Cone Place.
The Snow Cone Place. She's going to get some gift cards to give to kids for best decorations and all that. So that'll be nice. And I think, I know Greg had talked about coming up to work. He's really good with the outreach, and so that'll be a fun day. So if you know any little kids, JC, get yours up there, decorate their bikes, so, sorry.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Service Director? JC?
The lady with the drawings, is she coming around soon?
We're working on it, but the 17 breaks has kind of given us a little bit of a fit lately.
What was your question?
The drawings for the bathrooms.
The partitions, the $5,000 partitions instead of the $8,000 water project, priorities.
It's separate person.
Yes, I know. We're working on it. It's still on the list. I have not forgotten about it. It's just other things have to take precedence sometimes.
Any other questions, Billy?
Yeah, the I-70, I mean, the bore, I mean, the.
The liner's in.
The liner's in, in good shape.
The culvert's in. The, I don't have the video yet, but the existing culvert was in good shape. The liner's in, cured. They were just waiting to get a crew available to mobilize to actually start laying the new pipe in, the pipe that we've had sitting since last year.
They don't have a crew yet, that's the whole weapon.
So.
Any timeline on that, once the crew gets in?
Two weeks. I mean, it's just literally throwing the pipe in the ground, making sure it's, it's connected right. So. So, that's another thing that we have to coordinate. We'll have to do another water shut-off like we did before. We'll get it all, all the pipes in the ground and then have one night where we'll shut it off, disconnect the temporary line, connect the new lines, test them out, and then we'll have a boil order for the city, so.
And fix my yard.
Yes, well, that'll come after the pipes are fixed.
Then, uh, will we be doing any paving at all? Like, or is there any residential taps made like at Spring Park or anything yet?
They've laid all the pipe. They put saddles on the, on, on the main pipe where they're coming through. They've identified where all of them need to be connected. Um, they're gonna come back through and do that because they have to fill the water or fill the pipe and then make sure it's, uh, decontaminated. And then they'll test it and then they'll come back through and do the hookups and the connections and then they'll be, we'll abandon the other line.
So, is there a chance that paving could be done in that area or?
It's, we're already in June and they're still not out of that area. I figured they would be out of there by now and moving down Route 40. But that was one thing they did say is in the next month, they'll be down on, in, uh, East Main on the north side. So, they're gonna do the north side of that first. So, we'll see. They're supposed to start getting another crew in for that company too.
If you can kinda give an update, uh, you said the boring is done and then a crew will come in and pull the pipe or?
Well, they were pulling the pipe or they do the boring and then they pulled the pipe. There's one spot. It's the, what is that, Spruce Alley or across from Crosby's, next to Crosby's? Right there, one of the problems that we hit. That's where they bored right through the, the main water line. The main water line is literally on a bed of rock there, so they can't go underneath it. And then, uh, right above it is a gas line. So, they're working with the engineer to try and figure out what's going on. Once that's done, then the boring company will be out for a while, which will be great because that's where the majority of the water line breaks are coming from. Cause the machine is very, um, yes, it, it, it vibrates a lot and it puts a lot of pressure in the ground as it's digging through. Cause it kind of, I don't wanna say it, it excavates it all out, but it displaces a lot of stuff. And when you displace something, it has to go somewhere and that's where, like this one, this one break that was right out here in the front, they're literally three or four feet under it, but it pushed enough dirt that it.
When, when that happens, do we have to bring our crew out to repair?
It depends. Um, sometimes we've been doing it with them. Sometimes it's been them doing it, um, like the one last night.
It's all our guys.
I'm considering it to be part of one that's caused by them because they did the boring there. It just didn't show until there, but it was our guys that had to fix it last night. So, we were out till about eleven-thirty. There was Dawn was out there, Darren was out there, I was there, Mike Reed, Eric McVay.
I would have had burgers.
Yeah, that I can't eat.
I was there.
Are they responsible when they do it?
Yes. Well, but here's the problem with it. We're, we're, the one where they bored through the line, that's, okay, here it is. There's no doubt about it. Like, they fixed this one out here even though the other one, the boring is three or four feet below it. But that one like last night, I'm attributing it to them because if, if they wouldn't have put the line in through there, it wouldn't have been disturbed. Now, would it have broken later? Yes, it was a hole. I mean, it was about the size of a quarter. It's hard to say. I mean, but most of it is, so we're, we're working with them to try and, hey, here it is. Here's what's going on. So, we've also had a couple, uh, adds to the project too that we're working with them on. And every time they bring, you know, money up, I bring up these and these things that we're doing and back and forth with them. So, it's always a negotiation.
But they are working cooperatively with us on these things?
Oh, yes. I, I, I can't complain. I mean, other than, you know, the breaks, but, I mean, we knew it was gonna happen. I mean, we did. Uh, now, I don't want this many, but, but we've had it. It's, it's, it's what's going on. It's what's there. I mean, we've got, you know, really old water lines. They're past their prime. Some of them, literally the only thing holding them together is the clay around them, the dirt. So.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just have one. Um, you're good?
You're good, yeah.
The quote, clean the water tanks, what is that?
How much?
Yeah.
About fifteen thousand roughly. It's about three to four thousand per tank. The big thing with those is they need to be empty to do it. And, uh, you know, that's a lot of water to eat if we're buying it. Now, if we're making it, it's still an amount, but it's a little bit more.
Time-warped.
Yes.
No, now's the time.
Yes, yes. With that, I also have this. This thumb drive has the three drones, uh, videos from all three tanks. If anyone would like to see what the inside of the tank looks like and, and what the condition is, the settlement or this.
Sediment.
Sediment, thank you, uh, in the tanks and that's why we have to clean it, so.
How long is the video?
Uh, I don't know.
I mean, is that something that can be played?
I don't know. Jim, is that something we can play? There, it's just a.
Yeah.
Word file, or not a word file, but a Windows media file. There's three of them on there.
I'm just wondering if they're not three hours each, right?
No, I mean, five, ten minutes. I mean.
Do you guys care?
The majority of it, I mean, if you seen the inside of it, you're gonna see the inside of it and go from there, but.
Give you an idea of where.
Air conditioning, you guys figure out anything on that? Oh, that's another fun one. Talk about the Rec Center. So, so we're getting a quote. The air conditioning unit at the Rec Center is twenty-one years old. It has, uh, what is it, R-19 refrigerant in it, which is now illegal. So, we're getting a quote from, uh, a company to see what it's gonna cost to replace it. So, when that comes in, we'll figure it out and go from there. Yeah.
Okay, a question, he's not ready. Uh, we talked about moving electric cars, Donnie and Stewart's. What, what is that about?
Get-go gas station's gonna be put in there and they were basically, they were saying they're in the way. Um, they're supposed to break ground, what, next month?
Yeah, that's tentative.
So, yeah, tentative. They're breaking ground next month and Trinity's supposed to break ground next month, so.
So, was that get-go locations or is that in St. Clair's?
No. It's not, but we service that side of Route 40 with electric.
Okay. So, like Sheets, that's.
Sheets is ours.
Sheets is, so where's the line?
The line is all the way down by Commons Crossing. The, the red light down where the new road goes.
But the substation red lights to auto.
Yes.
Right, so we carry, so we carry everything on that side of the road?
Yep.
But the city limits?
The electric.
You say Sheets is in the city limits?
No. We have it for electric. So, we have, what is it? It's Advance, Stewart's, Sheets.
What's Texas?
We have, basically we have everything, but like the wet sides.
The electric fingers go outside of the city in several areas.
So, that's a major project going?
Yes.
So, you gotta.
Is that not coming up, Jim?
We're making arrangements.
Oh.
We actually have to set some new poles and then put the pillowstone and, and the fibers where they are. We're gonna have to cut the tops off the elements. Then they'll transfer over. So, but the poles and everything, the way they tend to, they have the drive and everything laid out. They'd be recommendable.
So, there'll be outages at that points or no outages? Lot of work.
So, we wanna just keep moving until that's.
I have one more question if you don't mind. I noticed there's a hydrant hit going down by Fort Cuma Home there. Does that hit my car or?
Yeah.
That's the one that, that hit the hydrant, bounced off it and hit the steps and.
On the firehouse.
No, right there, going down by PNC Bank.
Yes, yes. That's in front of. Yes, mom's house, yes.
In a case like that, is that taken care by their insurance?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, yes, if, if they have insurance, that's, that's part of the problem too and going through it. That one still works. It doesn't look pretty, but it works. And then, so what we've done with some of those is, uh, because they're gonna be replaced, um, we're, yeah. We're just gonna, yeah, just leave that alone for right now and then.
But even, even then, we will get reimbursed by insurance company.
Yet they have insurance. What we do is, uh, Michael's created a spreadsheet now, Michael Reed. Before, we just added it up depending on who was there, the amount of hours and then what vehicles were used and then, and then obviously the equipment. So, I mean, I've seen very, anywhere from, I don't know, a couple, couple thousand dollars. So, I think the, the biggest one was, was like thirteen thousand dollars because it was, like for me and four superintendents, all in overtime. So.
Insurance company really got it.
But. Well, I mean.
So, as I was setting that up, we should keep running.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Jeremy? Okay, we'll move on, um, to Police Chief.
I was gonna say no report, but looks like we need some time, boys. It's not a lot going on. Training, we've got two officers currently in Cincinnati at a training with, uh, two other officers scheduled for out-of-town training. And summer months, we've already got guys on vacations, so, um, filling in part-timers where we can. We've been really good, um, on overtime usage so far this year. Haven't had a whole lot of it, so. Uh, the NACK units are doing very good. We had drone deployment the other day in Bridgeport with a missing kid. And we had a deployment for the kinetic breaching tool, uh, last night or this morning on a SWAT team call out down in Laird, which performed very well. So, pretty happy with all the equipment.
So, what's the trainings there, there, the ones?
They're at, uh, active school shooter trainings.
Okay, well, all training that they're going to. Like you said, two in Cincinnati, that one coming up, same thing.
Yeah, well, anybody that's, uh, these are for active SWAT team members. So, we've got six different departments who all get that training. And then, uh, the continued professional training is mandatory another twenty-four hours this year. So, people are gonna have to travel to fill all twenty-four hours because only, I think sixteen of it are online or available online.
Chief, did we mention before about our new part-time officer?
I believe we did, but if, if we didn't, uh.
Female?
First female.
And then, if you don't, like how's the renovations going downstairs?
Slow.
I mean, the, uh, everything, the gym equipment and all that has been in use ever since it was put together. Guys are using it practically every day. Lockers are in use except for maybe four of the guys that aren't really workout people. But yeah, the, the painting all went well. Everything's coated, everything's clean. The floors are lava-able now.
Just gotta find time to install it.
Yeah, the hood system's down there. We just need to button up, uh, one thing on the wall, get a couple game boxes in while our hood system's up.
That one I do believe is the Dorothy, or not Dorothy tank, that's the Witch's Hat, the nineteen-twenty-nine tank.
Let's say something about the fantastic fridge.
Well, yeah, they're throwing a drone in there, so I mean.
A drill?
Yeah.
That drill can get wet?
Oh, yeah. It's a, it's a submersible. It's a submarine. No, not ours. This was the company we hired. If you look, I mean.
Which one says? Jerry, which tank?
Thinking it was the nineteen-twenty-nine tank. This one, the Witch's Hat. But, I mean, as you can see, the general condition of the tank is in really good shape. That's just some sediment and some other things in there. I wish they would stop going.
There's the titanium.
The, what you're seeing, that the darker stuff is some of the sediment that's in there that needs to be kinda cleaned out and gone through.
And that's what, that's what this quote is for.
Yes. There's other recommendations to do other things with the tank, but, I mean, it, it is what it is. It's a nineteen-twenty-nine tank. We're not gonna bring it up to current OSHA standards without investing a ton of money into it. But we can take care of it and, and go from there. Yep, that goes down the tube.
In the water? So, some of it.
You're underwater, yes.
That's what I thought they had.
Well, you can drain it.
No, they need to be a scoop out of it to go down.
You can drain it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It's, it's not naturally occurring with water. We, we suck when we get the water in. So, I mean. How hard does it suck out? Uh, that I don't know. Uh, obviously I've never been in the tank. But, I mean, the, I mean, it's naturally occurring. I mean, even the new Dorothy tank has, you know, it has sediment in it already. We have hard water around here. It's, you know, if anyone's ever worked on it. No, it's not lead-lined despite some other people's, uh, questions to the EPA. It is not a lead-lined tank. And, and if anyone has any questions, this is the inspection that was done with it, with that tank. And then there's actually a section in here where it talks about that they tested the inside and the outside of it and there is no lead in that tank.
My Lasik surgery.
Plus, it also has the ultrasonic thicknesses of the walls because that's something else somebody brought up too.
It does.
But, so. I mean, but for coming up on a hundred-year-old tank, it's in really good shape. Uh, was that, Donnie, was that you that came in and I showed? We've got the history of the report. So, there was one from two thousand and eleven, uh, that had interior pictures of the tank. All of that where it's painted in white right there, where it's got the nice finish on it, was rusted, um, before. So, uh, previous administrations had it, uh, painted on the inside and it's held up well. The, uh, actually, one of the comments in there from the inspector was that they're not making any recommendations for inside other than cleaning it.
Yes, they did.
It's not.
You wanna keep rolling?
No.
You can hit the next one. I mean, that's, that's pretty much just the, the drone just flying around looking at everything that can everybody see, so. Literally, but I have this. If anyone wants it, they can have the thumb drive or, or make copies of it and look at all of it. And that's, that's pretty much it.
What's that, Jim?
I say if you give me others, put it up on the.
Oh, on the internet.
Keep going or watch it?
Well, you watch a little bit of the other ones. Just hit the other ones real quick.
We can put all three of them up. People can go watch it.
Yeah.
Which one says?
That's Dorothy. That's the new tank, the twenty-twenty tank. It's not full. It, it barely ever gets full. But you can see the bottom there, uh, the amount, the amount of sediment that's already in that tank. So, you're talking to, you know, less than two or three-year-old tank.
It'll be cleaner.
It is.
Yeah, twenty-twenty to what?
Twenty-twenty-three?
No, what's that?
Nineteen-twenty-nine?
Nineteen-twenty, so.
Yeah.
What, a hundred-year difference?
Yeah.
Did I do that math right? Edit my phone.
Yeah, close enough.
Want me to play the other one?
I mean, it, it, you can see that from that first one. There's, there's sediment in the bottom. It just needs cleaned out, going through. But other than that, the tank is in pretty decent shape. There's still some things that should have been done with it. Technically, the tank's not OSHA compliant because it doesn't have guardrails on the top, which I can't believe they got it built without those. But there's reports on all that too, so.
All right, let's go to the next.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're just gonna make a little bit of the next one. And then, there's no issue to put them online, right? Jim, is that what you wanna do?
I mean.
Is that what you were saying?
This is the one out here.
Yes, but she said put them online.
Did you say you were gonna upload them online?
I can if you, if you'll give me the, the thumb drive for a day or so.
No, this is the eighty-two tank, nineteen-eighty-two. This is the light bulb tank.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I actually wanna paint it like a light bulb.
Donnie, what, this is the one they did what?
When they painted this one, the last time they painted a bunch of cars. It was.
The overspray.
Yeah.
You mean people's cars?
Yes.
I thought you meant decals inside. Which way are the water tanks from where we are? Right there. Do I look out this window?
You can look out that window to walk, look at that one. That's the one that's there, and then the other one is right back here. It's literally right there.
This is the one we're looking at now?
Yes, the light bulb, looks like a Seer light bulb.
Yeah.
And then the first one was the nineteen twenty-nine. So it needs cleaned, too. I don't know when, Donnie, do you remember the last time they cleaned them?
About nineteen ninety-two.
I would suggest that there be a detailed explanation that this is what they're looked like prior to them being cleaned before we get in their people's day, and it's all contaminated and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I don't, I don't need uploaded really.
So.
Do they?
But it's up to, I mean, I don't care. I mean, it is what it is, that that looks better than our pipes. I got some nasty pipes also people, if they really wanna. So I think that's good unless anybody else wants to see more of it.
I think I feel enough.
Yeah.
Is that good now?
Yeah, we're good. Thanks, Jim, Tom.
So you're gonna keep this, do you know I get it uploaded?
Well, let's discuss it, we'll see what, if we wanna upload it and see what we have to do.
I feel like we should personally hold to upload it until we clean them, and then we gotta do it before and after if we want it.
Yeah.
And then we can show them the progress.
Yeah. Say how dirty.
Matt, were you down with your?
I had one more question for Matt. I have to think of what it was now.
Thanks, Tom.
All right, Matt's finished, do you have any more questions?
There was another question I had. Matt, what did you say again, just quickly, you just talked about the training.
Training, vacations, status downstairs, equipment that got utilized recently.
Drone?
Yes.
Used a drone to look for a tip.
Yeah.
They found it?
Yeah.
All's well?
All's well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, as soon as Tom is back in here, we'll move on, since the Nets not here this evening, gonna touch on finance and the.
Just another thought on the on the water tank video. Department of Homeland Security would probably discourage publishing anything about your internal workings of your.
Good thought. Good, good point.
Okay, we'll move on to planning and zoning, Mr. Murphy.
Uh, thanks, Jim, just a reminder to council that the board of zoning appeals meets next Tuesday, the twenty-seventh at six P M here at the municipal building. All are welcome to attend. There, we mentioned the second reading of the rezoning request is this evening also. I've been working with Elizabeth on old utility easements on the Trinity site. They were made aware of in January twenty-two and trying to rectify those. We have an existing water line on that property way in the back southwest corner, and the existing sanitary line, the easement's from, I think, the mid-eighties, drawn incorrectly. So we're working toward correcting that with the Trinity team. The whaling antenna easement, that's the one that connects Plaza West to seventy-and-a-half acre site. We are looking at having electric added to that also, as far as not just water sewer roadway, but electric as well. It appears that they're agreeable to that, so we're working on finalizing that. And the last thing, I was kind of just gonna ask council what your consensus is. When there's a new appointment made to committees I work with, I send out a resume ahead of time, you know, the week prior, and you can review it. If you have questions, you can contact or email me for reappointments, usually they've been on the boards for a while. A council member did request at the last reappointment, some background submissions and things like that from the meetings. Roberta, it took her like four hours to put those together. I guess what I wanna get from council is just a consensus maybe on what you may like, so ahead of time. Or if, you know, maybe when you receive the information about a reappointment, I always say feel free to reach out to me and say, hey, you know, can you give me more information on that purpose so that, or on that person, so that before it gets to council, you, any questions you maybe you had, you can answer. I get the impression from some council members, you know, you're just okay with the appointments and appointments as long as you reach out to me, other ones may need more, a little more information, so. I don't know if you guys have any comments or how you'd like to handle that, just so we can be consistent each time.
I was just gonna say, I think, this is probably not what you wanna hear, but for me, it's good, the answer would be it depends, right? Like always to have enough time that we know that it's coming up, which you always do, right? But I guess I could say I can see scenarios where I might want more information, and other ones, like particularly if I, you know, know the person well, know this project well, know the, you know, work, then I may not have questions. It might be more straightforward, but I can, I get a vision other times where it might not be. So for me, it could be, it depends, but I think it starts with, hey, here's the person. And, you know, there's new council at times, you know, and the council changes, and so people are gonna know, you know, different people in different situations, so I think resume is helpful.
Yeah, and I know I'll have a resume for a new appointment sometimes for people that have been on the board for quite a while. I may not have them, but I could reach out to them and ask.
Yeah, and I think that, so on your side, it's also, it depends, you know what I mean? Like if it's a new person or somebody that's been around a while, so, I mean, that's just my comments.
Right, and Roberta, she just wanted me to relay to council that where she was frustrated was that it took her a long time to put all that together and change her day, which I can understand, but you do bring up a good point that anybody can always feel free to, you know, sure.
Yeah, and truly, I mean, I'll just speak for myself here, like the request for information is never to inconvenience people. It really is to have the best information to make a decision, which I can appreciate how it can be frustrating for people after the work at times. But if my job is then to make a decision, it's it's gotta be informed enough, you know? And so, you know, I can appreciate the frustration, but, you know, it's not to frustrate people. It really is, you know, my part, like I don't know, maybe J C wants information to frustrate people, but I don't. I wanted to like make, you know, a solid decision.
Yeah, and I can keep doing things the way I have been doing it, if someone needs more information, they can contact me.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we need a resume, you can just type something up. I'm thinking you need to bother people with a resume.
I mean, that's what I try to do now, like in for a reappointment, I know you wouldn't have a resume in the past, so I can say like, this is what the person does, here, here's how long you've been on the board.
Yeah, and for me, I can't speak for everybody, but if I'm voting on somebody, I like to know a little bit about them, how they voted, that's why I wanted to see them minutes.
Okay, and as mentioned, I can kind of keep doing it the way I have been, and if someone needs more information, then okay, you know.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, too, Tom, on a reappointment, it's not instant. I mean, it's like you have time to let Snow meeting before or something like that, correct?
Usually, yeah, I mean, there's been a few scenarios where the reappointment maybe it was called later than I would have liked. And so we may need that reappointment ASAP.
Okay, yeah.
But there are, I do my best to try and, I'll be on board, hopefully catch you.
This, are the minutes not only gonna flash drive and hear something, or how are minutes from like?
I can't answer, I don't pay, I don't file the minutes, so I can't answer why.
Okay. And those minutes are gonna vary based on the committee, just like they do in our committees. And we don't have flash drive of utility meetings, we don't have flash drive of building and grounds. You know, so some of those are gonna be handwritten, maybe.
Yeah, right. Okay.
So, I mean, it could take a minute to go back for a while. I think, though, for the most part, I mean, I feel like you're pretty up on who's coming up for appointment and gives us at least that week's advance time, so appreciate that.
I'll kind of keep things as they, I'm sorry.
When is the next zoning meeting?
Oh, that board of zoning appeals meeting, that's next Tuesday, the twenty-seventh at six P M here in council chamber.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom, any other questions for Tom or?
Okay, thank you very much, Tom.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll move on to the council committees, finance, Donnie.
Uh, yeah, we had a finance committee meeting tonight. As far as our percentages on revenue, we are right now at the end of May, forty-two point nine six four percent, we're right on track for that. Our expenses were twenty-nine point seven seven eight percent, and we are good there. We also discussed through the meeting, and council has in front of them the financial worksheet budget. And what the finance committee is asking is that the council reviews this. This is something that the county has to have at what, the half way?
Twentieth, right.
Twentieth, okay.
Yes.
The county has to have our approval on pretty much a preliminary.
It's a preliminary budget.
On what we're looking at for next year's budget. But we do ask that you go through, check it out, if you have any questions. We're talking about possibly emailing Annette with your questions, and or you can come to me, or and we'll get, we'll get answering for you. But please look at it and let us know your thoughts.
And I just wanted to say, if council, because I came in during part of your finance committee meeting, if there are changes that need to be made, like I noticed somebody said questioning a math calculation, those changes can be made before you do your third reading, so that is not a, an issue to make those changes, we don't have to start all over.
Okay, great. And that's, that's, we spent most of our time at the finance committee meeting on this, so that's, that's all that I have, unless you have any questions.
I just said, not for you, but generally, if anybody knows the answer, I should have asked this at the meeting, but this is a temporary budget that we have to have, right?
Right, it's a preliminary budget required.
I think I remember last year asking why it doesn't say temporary at the top of this, I don't know if you can even make that.
Yeah, that would be an Annette.
And and then I guess the other question, since this is temporary, these aren't like locked in, we.
No, this is basically, this is your proposed budget, so the county auditor has it.
So we're not stuck on something in one fund?
Yeah, your final budget is either done at the end of the year or like this year in the very beginning of the following year.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, utilities, Terry isn't here this evening, Annette, do you have anything you wanna bring up for utilities?
No, just same old procedure, working on nodes and helping with corrosion, study flutters and testing, full research over two. And the rates, we have a thorough read for the rates.
Anybody have any questions for Anita?
Did anybody come to you about sewer adjustments or anything?
I received documentation Friday, and so that'll be presented at the next utility meeting.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, move on to the police committee, Mike.
Yeah, I wasn't here last meeting to, you know, schedule a meeting for this time. If Chief Arbens is available the second Monday of next month, we can have our police committee meeting. Okay. And I'd like to add, too, that I appreciate all the training that the police officers are getting. Can't ever get enough of that.
I think the training is beneficial not only to the officers, but it's beneficial to the city in general, that they have well-trained, responsible people to get important positions.
Yeah, yeah.
Mike, I just looked at, I'll be out of town, the seventeenth for vacation.
Okay. Can we do the first, does that always have to be the third, second Monday?
It's tentatively the second meeting, the third Monday. If you wanna have it a different time, you could hold it a different time, but you'd have to notify the public in advance.
Publish and advertise.
So that there's a change for that meeting, so that, because it is open to the public. But you would have to give the public a minimum forty-eight hours notice that that meeting will be held, but you could.
But you could decide right now?
Right.
And there's enough notice now, if you made an announcement now, if you did it.
If you could change it tonight and we could make sure that whatever, whatever the date is, is gonna be changed for that month.
Yeah, let's do that if we can, I'd like to see if there's anything that chief needs, we talked about some, getting some money for some equipment.
Yeah, if you, if you wanna get together with him, pick a date, this convenient committee.
The third.
July third.
The day before the fourth.
Yeah, it'd be the next meeting.
But they wanna have, I think they have a special, if they wanna do it.
Yeah, it's not even council meeting, yeah.
Is that okay, Matt?
Yeah.
It won't be, it won't be long, but okay, we'll do that.
Change it, we could post it that it will be the first meeting instead of the third.
Yeah.
Or third Monday rather.
Yeah.
Would that be after the meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, you'd have the utility meeting first, and then you'd have the police committee meeting afterwards. Take your no-dos.
Okay, streets north side, Mike, you have anything on the north side?
No, no report.
Mr. Thrash, anything on the south side streets?
No report.
Anything on safety?
No report.
Building and grounds?
No. So the next meeting is July eighteenth at three o'clock at the city building. And since we've kind of decided and talked at that last meeting that the junior sports, since it's a building and grounds kind of thing, that's gonna, some of those conversations are gonna be engulfed in the buildings and grounds committee meeting. So I do have the contract the city has with junior sports that was back in nineteen eighty-eight, and it says in section two, paragraph F, that during the month of August each year, then agreed upon location and time, both parties will meet for an annual review. So it would be my goal to get some dates from the service director and the mayor from times in August that we plan that and make that part of the August buildings and grounds committee meeting. So that's my report.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Okay, Christie and Linda are not here this evening, so at this time, we'll move on to law director, Lisa.
Okay, I'm going to move a couple things around on this agenda. Councilperson has requested an executive session, so I'm going to ask that we do the executive session now before we go and do the legislation. And that is under O R C one twenty-one point twenty-two G three.
Okay, we'll need a motion to recess to an executive session.
So I'm the one who had asked for that, so I appreciate that, so I'm making a motion that we go to executive session under O R C one twenty-one, well, I'm not done.
Twenty-two G three.
One twenty-one point two-two G three.
Three, yes.
Now you can second my motion.
I second.
There you go.
Okay, now we'll vote.
Obrich? Yep. Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
And Senso?
Yes.
All members in favor?
Okay, we'll recess to executive session in the small.
I know, I was expecting empty. Fill one of these out.
Let's raise a little girl.
Mary, turn off the heat.
I know. Yeah, I was perky on the phone now. Okay. Okay, yeah.
Okay, at this time, I will accept a motion to lead executive session.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Executive session.
Vote.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith? Yes. Thrash?
Yes.
Benzenza?
Yes.
Okay, we're back in regular session. The council, no action was taken during the executive session. Okay, we'll go back to law director on the ordinances.
Okay, we have, council has before us several pieces of legislation up for various stages of reading. We will start with first readings and we'll start with ordinance number 202319. And this is the ordinance adopting the budget for the city of St. Clairsville, Ohio, fourth calendar year 2024, declaring emergency. As we discussed earlier, this is a proposed budget that's required to be filed with the county auditor. Our due date this year is July 20th, 2024. This will allow us for three readings, but with the emergency language, it'll be effective once it is passed and we can give it to the auditor.
Okay, Jacob, would you read ordinance 2023-20?
19.
19.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Ordinance number 202319, an ordinance adopting the budget for the city of St. Clairsville, Ohio, for the calendar year 2024 and declaring an emergency.
Okay, that is the first reading on ordinance 202319. We now have ordinance 202320.
23, or 202320. This is a, the first step in certifying our renewal levy for police levies that'll be put on the ballot this year in November. We first have to ask the county auditor to certify to the city the total current tax valuation. I have emergency language in here. At your next council meeting, because we don't have enough people to pass by emergency, I would request that you do do it as emergency because as soon as we can get that certified over to the county auditor, they can give us the certification we need. Then we can do the second resolution and get that to the board of elections. So this is a resolution requesting county auditor to certify to the city of St. Clairsville the total current tax valuation of the city of St. Clairsville and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by 95 hundreds or 0.95 mil and declaring an emergency. And once again, that is for the renewal levy for police expenses.
Just a couple of questions. I just want to clearly articulate this is a renewal levy.
This is a renewal.
No additional dollars.
No, we do it every five years.
So this is every five years?
Correct.
And do we have the opportunity for three readings?
Not on this one. This is just the certification. We need to get that to the auditor so they can tell us the amount. The next one, I believe we should have enough time to do the three reads.
So this needs to be done, it could be done tonight if we had five. We only have four council, so, okay, so next meeting. So are we doing a first? No, we're not doing.
Yeah, it'd be a first reading tonight.
This is our first reading. That's all we can do.
Yeah, we're writing a deadline to the board of elections to get it on the map.
Right, yeah, that has to be in August, so.
Okay.
Okay, Jacob, would you read ordinance 2023-20?
Resolution number 202320, a resolution requesting the county auditor to certify the city of St. Clairsville the total current tax valuation of the city of St. Clairsville and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by 95 hundreds, 0.95 mil, and declaring an emergency.
That is the first reading on 2023-20. Okay, we'll now move on to second readings.
Up for second reading tonight is ordinance number 2023-17, and that's the ordinance changing the zoning district classification of the 17.56 acre parcel on the west side of town, commonly known as 48160 National Road from office and institution, which is O 1 to commercial district C 1.
Okay, Jacob, would you read ordinance 2023-17?
Ordinance number 202317, an ordinance changing the zoning district classification of a 17.56 acre parcel of real property, commonly known as 48160 National Road from office and institution L I to commercial district C 1.
That is the second reading on 202317. We'll now move to the next third reading.
Up for third reading tonight are two ordinances. First one is ordinance number 202315, and that's the ordinance amending section 925.01B to establish water rates effective at the earliest date determined by law.
Okay, this is the third reading on that. Jacob, would you read it, please?
Ordinance number, sorry.
That's right, 2023-15.
Ordinance number 202315, an ordinance amending section 925.01B to establish water rates effective at the earliest date determined by law.
Okay, this is the third reading. It only requires four votes to pass, so it can be passed this evening.
If you will, I'll make a motion.
Give me a second. Take a roll call vote.
Obrich?
Yep.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Benzenza?
Yes.
202315 is passed. Okay, 202316.
202316 is an ordinance amending section 933.02 to establish sewer rates effective at the earliest date determined by law.
Jacob, would you read ordinance 202316?
Ordinance number 202316, ordinance amending section 933.02 to establish sewer rates effective at the earliest date determined by law.
Again, this is the third reading and it can be voted on. entertain a motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
And a second. Okay, we'll now take a vote.
Obrich?
Yep. Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Benzenza?
Yes.
Remember your thing.
Okay, ordinance 202316 is also passed.
Okay, I have one other item. Council president, I passed out to you tonight, resolution number 202322. This is not ready for voting on. I'm just covering because I will not be at the next meeting. This is being requested by Presbyterian Senior Living Company. They own various senior facilities, including the Mark H. Kennedy Park. They are a nonprofit organization and they are doing a bond. They're trying to raise money. They're doing a bond renewal to do various construction and rehabilitation to the facilities across several states. They are required under IRS tax code to request that the city in which a facility is located allow the council president and the mayor to execute a certificate of approval. There is absolutely no obligation on the part of the city. It's just a requirement required under.
No financial obligation.
Right, no financial obligation. It's just we have to give that approval.
And this has to be emergency when, it's not really after.
Right, yeah, it has to be emergency when it's passed. They will have a virtual public hearing. That date is currently set for Thursday, June 29th, 2023. They're doing a notice of public hearing in the Times Leader. Anybody who's interested can click on the Zoom link and attend that public hearing. And they've requested that you vote on it at your July 3 meeting.
So they're having a public hearing on the 29th?
Correct.
And this isn't voted on?
Right.
And that's okay?
And yes, I mean, it's just, they're having a public hearing. You just now, they need to allow both the mayor and the president of council to sign the certificate. And it will, according to their legislation, they're trying to raise 30,725,000 in tax exempt obligations and up to $500,000 will be spent within the city and its facility updates. Once again, absolutely no financial obligation on the city itself. And I just wanted to let you know that. I gave you all a copy of it if you want to read through it. I'm not leaving. I will be working until next Tuesday. I won't be leaving until my vacation, until after that. So if you have any questions, just give me a call or send me an email. I can try and answer them for you.
But in two weeks, we would vote on this?
Yes, in two weeks you will vote on it. You've got to have the public hearing first.
Okay, okay, the public hearing is first.
First, yes.
All right.
And then the ballot.
Okay, that's the end of the agenda. The next meeting, we'll kind of clarify. It does say correctly that the next meeting will be July 3. A lot of people automatically think that all federal holidays are on Monday, and that changes our council meeting. But 4th of July is the one holiday that is celebrated on the day itself. So our council meeting is on the 3rd and it will go as regularly scheduled. Anybody has anything else? If I would like to accept the motion to adjourn. Meeting's adjourned.
Are you guys going to be here? Like I just think of holidays and.
Yeah, I'll board.
J.C.?